Start the recording. I apologize. You'd think I would get used to that. All right, start over. Welcome, everybody, to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, September fourteenth. The city council meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID nineteen emergency. With that, I would call the order to call the meeting to order. And Krista, if you could please call roll.
Yes, Councilmember Coco.
Here.
Councilmember Soltes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hardjhausen. Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I'm here.
You have a quorum, your honor.
Great, thank you. And if everyone could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. Next up is approval of the agenda. Regan, do you have any changes for the agenda tonight?
I do not have any changes.
Okay, thank you. Beth?
Mayor, I was wondering if we could move C seven from the consent agenda for discussion under new business.
Is there consensus to move C seven to new business for discussion? I see three people.
That should be enough if you have three plus Beth, that gives you four.
And I have no problem, and Beth included three, but I have no problem moving it either. So a majority is fine moving that. So we will take item C seven from the consent agenda and move it to new business item number eight. Okay, thank you all very much. With with that, I would ask for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Sean and seconded by Joe to approve the amended agenda. I will do a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. The amended agenda has been approved. Next up is public communication, and we will start with our citizen of the year. And I see that Mark and Stacy Shu have joined us. If you would like to move them over, Krista. And Mark, and I'm assuming Stacy's with you. If you can hear us. Great. It's good to see you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Perfect.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
You bet. It is, I have a proclamation to read and then have a few words, but I want to congratulate both of you for being selected as the Covington Citizens of the Year. And a proclamation is whereas since the city's first birthday, the city council has made it a tradition to select a citizen of the year to honor individuals who have made a difference in our community. And whereas the city council voted to honor Mark and Stacy Shu as Covington Citizens of the Year in two thousand twenty-one for their efforts to make Covington a better place to live, work, and play. And whereas Mark and Stacy's love for the residents of the city is evident in the ways they can contribute to the community as residents themselves and as business owners, always going above and beyond to help when needed. And whereas Mark and Stacy share a passion for giving back and do so through donations, scholarship, providing meals for essential workers, first responders, volunteers, and the homeless, fostering a positive working environment for employees, and having an overall positive impact on the Covington community. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby recognize and commend Mark and Stacy Shu for their dedication to the city of Covington and the Covington community. And Mark and Stacy, if we're standing together, I would hand you a plaque. And Krista has a picture of that plaque. And and I would hand you this proclamation, and the plaque reads Covington Citizen of the Year, Mark and Stacy Shu in recognition of your outstanding service to the city of Covington. And that's presented here in September of two thousand twenty-one. And Chris is going to work with your schedules. And I will meet with you in person and so that I can hand deliver these to you. And I just want to say thank you very much for all that you have both done. Some of the comments that were brought in were that that Mark and Stacy are true community leaders. You specifically chose Covington to open Chick-fil-A, and you proceeded to invest yourselves by moving here to truly be part of the community. You welcome everyone with open arms and a smiling face to their business and are a positive influence. They give back, and that's in capital letters, give back to our community and never expect special praises or shout outs. While you're getting the praises and shout outs tonight.
Thank you.
You give to students, youth, family, homeless, struggling, and those not, essential workers, their team members, scholarships, partnerships, fellow businesses, and more. You provide certificates, free meals, always a smile and hope to our community members. And your contribution, dedication, and overall care for Covington is remarkable. And this person said it is their pleasure to nominate you. So I've known both of you since before you even opened Chick-fil-A. You started you started investing yourselves in the community when you made the decision to come down here and open Chick-fil-A and before you even opened it. And I am just honored to be able to give you this recognition as citizens of the year. And I want to thank you very much. And council wants to thank you very much for all that you do for our community.
Thank you guys so much.
Absolutely. Yes, truly our pleasure. Thank you.
You bet. And is there anything, this time I turn it over to you, you get to say anything that you would like?
Well, we're certainly humbled and honored. It's a it's been our vision at Chick-fil-A Covington to have a significant positive impact in our community every day. And so to 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 be recognized in this way is certainly validates what we do. And, you know, it's Stacy, I really appreciate everyone for thinking of us. So we're truly humbled and blessed.
Well, thank you again very much for all that you do for our community, and it is an honor and pleasure to bestow this on on both of you. And we'll make sure and get a time together where I can deliver them in person to you. Social distancing, mask on. Not through the drive-through.
Absolutely. We'll have some spicy sandwiches.
Oh, you know, that's my favorite thing on any menus, your spicy sandwich. So thank you again. You bet. And thank you very much for joining us tonight and everything you do for our community.
Thanks, guys. Take care.
All right. Have a good evening.
You too.
And I don't know if Krista, if Jim has joined us. I don't see him.
Mr. Mayor, he said he did. He called in and couldn't unmute. So I told him to rejoin and wait or hit star nine. That's star nine, right?
I believe so, Chris. Is it star nine?
And I told him we have to give him permission.
Star six to unmute, star nine to raise hands.
I'll tell, I'll let him know.
Okay.
Thank you.
While we wait for Jim, is council, okay, if I move to our next proclamation? Okay. And for this is Anita, Anita has joined us. All right. Welcome, Anita. If you can move Anita over. Welcome to this evening, Anita. Thank you for joining us tonight. Can you hear us? And you were on mute, Anita. You're still on mute. There you go.
Oh, good.
All right. Thank you for joining us tonight, Anita. I have a proclamation to read to you tonight. Or read for you. This proclamation is whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one marks the two hundred and thirty-fourth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine one five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, to be Constitution Week in Covington and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. So Anita, I would virtually like to hand you this proclamation. We'll make sure that we get your contact information to send you a copy of it. And is there anything that you would like to say tonight?
Yes, please. Thank you for having me. On behalf of the Lakota Daughters of the American Revolution, a member of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, we thank you for recognizing our Constitution Week proclamation. As you already know, the Constitution is the framework for our government, and our government is only as good as our Constitution. We feel it's important that every American have a fundamental understanding and appreciation of the Constitution so we can carry on our most important work of freedom, equality, and the pursuit of happiness. It is quite fitting that we take this anniversary of the Constitution to reflect on and honor this document and those who wrote it. Thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for your time.
And Anita, thank you very much for to you and the entire group of Lakota Daughters, and really appreciate you being here tonight and accepting this proclamation for Constitution Week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Thank you. And with that, let's see, I do not see Jim yet. So let's move into our next proclamation. And if we could move Lisa over, please. Good evening, Lisa. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you see me?
Yes.
Our son's bedroom, so sorry for the decor, but.
It's not a problem at all. That actually reminds me of the guitar I used to have. Thank you for joining us tonight, and I have a proclamation to read for you. Whereas the city of Covington recognizes the importance of adequate nutrition as a basic right for each citizen by providing financial support to our local food banks who provide individuals and families in need with the fuel to thrive so nobody's health is jeopardized by lack of appropriate foods. And whereas our local food banks, working with the city of Covington, local churches, and volunteers distributes food to thousands of Covington residents annually. And whereas the emergency feeding program coordinates the annual Mayor's Day of Concern on the third Saturday in September, now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Covington, do hereby proclaim September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one as Mayor's Day of Concern for the hungry in the city of Covington, and strongly urge all citizens to donate food or funds to our local food bank, the storehouse, to nourish those who are hungry. And Lisa, I would virtually hand this proclamation over to you, and we'll make sure that you get a copy of this proclamation. And I know if I don't see you beforehand, I will see you on Saturday, the twenty-fifth. But is there anything that you would like to say tonight?
I would just like to say thank you very much for your support. The storehouse would not be thriving as much as they are without your support, Jeff. The city of Covington and the volunteers that have helped provide the food and the drives that you've helped facilitate for us have just meant the world to us, and it's allowed us to continue to support the growing needs of the Covington community. So thank you so much. We're very blessed by your support.
Well, and thank you, and please pass on my thanks to everybody that's at the storehouse, including all the volunteers, the workers. Because without you, there'd be a lot more starving families in Covington. And not just starving, but everything else, like the back-to-school event that you do and and everything else that you help with. And it's a privilege and honor to be able to help you and everybody through the storehouse. So thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you for recognizing us and our awesome, amazing volunteers. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you. And we'll make sure you get a copy of this proclamation, and you have a great evening, Lisa.
Thanks. You too. And we'll see you next Saturday, not this Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
Saturday.
A week and a half from now. Thank you.
Correct. Thanks.
Good night. And I know Jim was having connection issues. I don't see him yet. Do you have an update, Jared?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. I can read the proclamation, but I want, and then I, we are setting up meetings with Mark and Stacy and with Jim to present it to them in person. Would council like to wait until Jim might be able to show up later on in our council meeting, and we can pause at that time to read the proclamation and give it to him? Is council okay with that? Okay. Is that okay that we do that, Regan and Mark?
That's no problem.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I will hold that, and then let's go into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff, and comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. And this is the time for those in our audience, if you would like to bring up something to our council, whether it's on the agenda or not. You have four minutes, so please raise your hand if you would like to address the council this evening. Anybody in the audience like to address the council at the first of two public comment periods? Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. With that, we'll move into approval of the amended consent agenda. And this is item C one, C two, C three, C four, C five, C six, and C eight. Look for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Joe, seconded by Beth to approve the amended consent agenda consisting of item C one through C six and C eight. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote? Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the amended agenda. Next up is new business item number one, consider appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Does council wish to take action this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Sean.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Powell to the Parks and Recreation Commission, please.
A second.
It's been moved by Sean and seconded by Beth to nominate, to appoint Jeff Powell to fill position number four on the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Sean, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was impressed with Jeff's willingness to step up and get involved. He has an issue that he is very interested in, and and he's brought it to the city's attention in the past, and he has talked about in his interview about the process and the time it takes to get through. And I appreciate his willingness to actually step up and get involved. I know some people get frustrated maybe with how things work, but Jeff actually has decided that he wants to get involved and see how things actually work and move some of the issues that are important to him. And as he said to a number of people that he represents, so I want to commend him for for stepping up and volunteering to be on this commission. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Just to agree with everything that Sean said.
Perfect. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jeff Powell to fill position number four on the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, I'll call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote? Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye. It is unanimous to appoint Jeff Powell to fill position number four on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Jeff. I see you are online. With that, we will move into new business item number two, which is to consider appointments to the youth council. Does council wish to take action tonight?
I'd like to motion to appoint Fatima Ali to the council.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved, and Jennifer, which position? We have position one with a term expiring June thirtieth of twenty-two. Position two, June thirtieth of twenty-three, and position five, June thirtieth of twenty-four.
Let's go with twenty-four. She didn't mention, well, it's probably in her application, actually, which I already closed all of that. What year of.
Oh, then.
She graduated in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so let's do twenty twenty-three then.
Okay. So it's been moved in second. It's been moved by Jennifer, seconded by Christina to fill position two on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Beth, thank you for that information.
Yes, thank you.
Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Fatima, you could just feel her excitement about being involved on the commission, and I she had great answers for everything, but the one that that struck me that I can't say that we've ever heard before is when we have asked someone how they would serve as ambassador, and she says she would be adaptive and flexible. And I was like, right there, that is pretty much if everyone in the world could take some advice from Fatima, I, she's a go-getter, and she'll be a great ambassador for the city serving on a youth council. So I definitely recommend her for the position.
Perfect. Thanks, Jennifer. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. Aside from just echoing exactly that, I think she's super mature. Just that answer alone right there. I don't even feel like many adults would have given or could provide flexibility. And then I'm going to go back to this. And then when we asked her what you'd like to see as a change in the city of Covington, she actually said the word respect, which is very respectable. We could always use more respect and kindness. She followed it up with kindness. Overall, her energy is palpable. Just, just a good person, a good human, I think should make just a great asset on our youth council. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Right, seeing nobody raise their hand. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Fatima Ali to position number two on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as unanimous to appoint Fatima to fill position number two on the youth council. Does council wish to take any further action tonight?
I move to appoint Elizabeth Ramirez to youth council position number one with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved by Beth, seconded by Jennifer to appoint Elizabeth Ramirez to fill position number one on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I was really impressed with her desire to help her peers and youth get more involved in the community. And I also liked her idea about having an opportunity for youth to interact more with city council, not just those that are on the youth council, but to help build those relationships.
Thank you, Beth. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
I agree with everything that Beth said, and also her response to what she would like to accomplish was supporting an environment where kids are more active in the community. And that seems to be a recurrent theme tonight in a lot of the responses, and it's really exciting to see our youth paying attention and realizing that 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 they're not as engaged as they could be, and to see you stepping up and saying, hey, let's get more of us involved in how we can do that. So I think should be a great addition.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Is anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion tonight? Right, seeing nobody raise their hand, has been moved and seconded to appoint Elizabeth Ramirez to fill position number one on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote? I didn't hear you, Jared.
Aye.
Thank you. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye as unanimous to appoint Elizabeth Ramirez to fill position number one on the youth council. Does council wish to take any further action tonight? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand.
I wish to appoint Katie Lance to youth council, please.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Jennifer and seconded by Beth to appoint Katie Lance to fill position number five on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. My mouse is wonky this evening. Takes a little while sometimes to get to the mute button. I really appreciated Kitty's response about why she wanted to be on youth council. It was receiving new points of view, and that is just a great response and to get someone on council, while not that any of them aren't, but to see someone so willing to listen to others and to to communicate and collaborate, I think should be a great addition to the group.
Thank you, Jennifer. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Just reiterating the the words, the collaboration, getting, trying to connect with youth, and again, giving them an opportunity to be heard. And it just, she reiterates that theme about this thirst for youth to be more connected with the community and how she could help with doing that. And I don't believe they were just buzzwords. I think she really spoke to wanting to make that change happen.
Thank you, Beth. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion tonight? All right, seeing nobody, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Katie Lance to fill position number five on the youth council. to fill position number five on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. I'll call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye as unanimous to appoint Katie Lance to fill position five on the youth council. And thank you to all of our applicants for the youth council and congratulations. Next up is new business item number three, consider appointment to the arts commission. Would council like to take action tonight? Joe?
I would like to appoint Rebecca Lloyd to fill position number four on the arts commission with a term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty three.
I'd second that.
Okay. Been moved by Joan, seconded by Christina to appoint Rebecca Lloyd to fill position four on the arts commission with a term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty three. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion, please?
Certainly. So full disclosure, Rebecca Lloyd, or it's very hard for me to say that. Ms. Lloyd was my drama teacher at Kentwood twenty years ago when I started at Kentwood. So disappointment has nothing to do with great improvement. I hope everyone understands that as it's too late for that. But she has a passion for arts, whether it's drawing, painting, theater, any type of art she has a passion for. And she will bring that out in others around. She's going to be very vocal, but that's something that I think is needed to bring about a change in the arts community in this city. She will follow through. That's something she said is that she's going to follow through. And that's something that she's very good at is following through on what she says. I am thankful to see that she popped up onto this commission because I think she will do a wonderful job. And I said it during the interview, without her class, I wouldn't be sitting here. Because when I was a little teenager, I couldn't talk in front of people. And that drama class helped me be able to talk in front of people. So you all have her to blame for me sitting here. So there you go.
There you go. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. I can't echo the high school portion or whatever class portion, but the rest I can. She just seems like a master of her trade, not only like over twenty years at Kentwood alone. I mean, multiple decades. And I like her passion for what theater, what art can do and how much it can involve the community. And I think over the last couple of years, we've learned, well, I've learned more than before the arts, which isn't just art, but the arts really provide a lot of life and a lot of joy. And we can certainly use a lot of that today. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
I would like to speak for the motion.
Yes, Jennifer.
Rebecca Lloyd said so many times, build community, bring community together and using the arts to do that. And having been on the arts commission, I can say absolutely that that's the focus of the arts commission and her energy and passion for that will just make the commission stronger. Her statement about the arts are important and using arts as a statement to show, to show the world that we are a community, not just bedroom community, I thought was great. So I'm pretty excited to see the changes that the commission would propose with her added.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion?
I'd like to speak for the motion. There are different careers in my life. I've taught negotiating and how to become a master negotiator. And one of the tactics is to assert your importance to others. And throughout her interview, she kept saying how she's the one for this position and she believes that she's, you know, overqualified to be on this position. And with that confidence, I couldn't agree more. I think that she'll do a great job. She said she's directed over a hundred plays. That's incredible. That's a lot. So I think she'll do great and I hope she keeps that confidence and I want to learn from her.
Thank you, Jared. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Right, seeing nobody raise their hand has been moved and seconded to appoint Rebecca Lloyd to fill position number four on the arts commission with a term expiring May thirty first, two thousand twenty three. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I also vote aye as unanimous to appoint Rebecca Lloyd to fill position four on the arts commission. With that, we'll move into new business item number four. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement to install audio and video equipment for hybrid public meetings. And we have with us tonight, Mason. We did. We have to move Mason over, I believe.
Technology's a little slow. He's coming over.
Okay.
Lost in the abyss.
This may have been planned by you guys.
I did click to move him over, so he should be over.
See, we need to update, see?
It's my computer because it was at every meeting I have. Mason, welcome this evening. It's all yours.
All right, glad to be here. And I was unfortunately correct that I will change my background real quick. I do not do this. Well, just do.
I love your background, Mason. That was great.
I was wondering since I was an attendee, I'm like, I can't see which one I've got left on there. So, all right. Well, thank you all for having me for doing this presentation. Back on July thirteenth, it was brought to the council to recommend what going out and getting proposals for the new council room hybrid meeting setup. And so that was about two months ago. And we have, in that time, created the criteria for, yeah, for the proposals. We've gone out, done requests for proposals. And we've received back a proposal that Keith and I both believe will serve the council's needs and the needs of the city for being able to have a fully hybrid council meetings in person and remote, both for the audience or for council or for presenters. I know you've got the explanations in general of what it would entail. Briefly, we'd be adding the video cameras to show the council, to show staff, as well as be able to show the podium and some of the, and the audience. There are audio upgrades to help with ensuring that the audio quality is controlled and we won't have feedback issues, as well as some upgrades to the room speakers to be able to better control, yeah, control the sound in the room. So that, again, trying to control those feedback issues that we've had in the past, all of that feeding into a computer system that would then be able to both output to Zoom or whatever meeting platform that we would potentially choose in the future, as well as basically for in the room onto a, we would be replacing the projector with a very large screen, which with the detail of the video, we think is will be sufficient. It's only ten inches, I believe, smaller than the current projections that we're doing. So should be very.
Let me just clarify something there. Basically, replacing it with a screen, like a mounted TV.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And then also the council would still have the screens that the monitors and as well for being able to view what's going on, video on the meeting or for presentations and so forth. So other than that, you've got the information. In terms of the budget impact, we are hopeful, we expect that this will be reimbursable through the ARPA since it is helping to facilitate the hybrid meetings to comply with COVID regulations and such. So other than that, I definitely would like to hear whatever questions you have about the system proposed.
So if council has any questions, could you please raise your hand and I'll call on you? Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate this presentation tonight. I think it's great. And I know we've been talking about this for a while, Mason, to get us more accessible. And it's been interesting to see that COVID has been driving a lot of this technology push. What, so one of the questions I have is what will be the production parts of this, you know, when we videotape this, what will it look like? Can someone watch it in real time or in the future when they, when we save it? Will it have like something like Kent says, you know, Kent City Council, the date? And then list, you know, council members, that sort of thing? I'm wondering what the production value will look like. And then I have another question.
Keith, I'm curious. Do you know? Yeah. Do you know?
Yes, I do know. So that's, it's going to be pretty similar to actually how it is now. It'll be a Zoom feed with three video feeds going into it. We'll be highlighting mainly two, so it's going to be whatever the, our two main cameras are picking up. And so most of the time it'll be on one camera that's showing other council presenter or city staff, whichever one's speaking. And the other screen will be whatever is like the PC is currently presenting. So if it's currently a presenter, it'll be whatever they're showing council. It'll be pretty much whatever council is seeing on their monitors. And so it'll be a recording of those two screens and that just gets recorded. They will be able to view it live. So with this, we will be able to live cast our Zoom meeting itself. So if we want to, that can move forward to going like right now with what we're doing. Anyone who wants to view this needs to be in the Zoom meeting as an attendee.
Right.
Or we can push that forward into a couple of other options.
Okay, thank you. And then I think it's outstanding that this is likely to have no fiscal impact on the budget. That's great work. I did wonder about storage costs. So that's a cost that probably won't be covered by the ARPA grant. But I'm just wondering how much we think it will cost to store these files indefinitely.
I would look, thanks. The video file storage is, it's basically going to be the same as what we're doing right now with the meetings that we're doing. So what the intent, yeah, the intent of the system is that our records would be basically the, like the recordings that we do with Zoom. We, the intent there being keep things simplified. Yeah, and so the storage costs at that point are negligible. If we were, if the system was done in such a way that we were recording, we were actually recording all three video feeds constantly, then that would be more of an issue. But we've kind of in a way intentionally set it up, not because the idea is to capture the meeting as it is actually occurring, not ancillary video that's not actually being shown.
Thank you, Mason.
That's it.
Thanks, Sean. Joe?
Thanks for all the information, Mason. I just have one question. I did ask it to Reagan. I'm not sure if anyone else did. So it's good, just get it out there. We approved this tonight. I figured contracts and all that stuff could sign within the next week, week and a half, something like that. What's our timeline looking at getting this installed?
Yeah.
I'm not saying I'm tired of sitting at council meetings and with my dog barking at me, but I'm tired of sitting at council meetings with my dog barking at me.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that. And that was something I definitely was pressing the vendor on. Is it's like, hey, I need even, I need, and I need a timeline. What are, what are you currently experiencing in terms of, you know, from the point of a contract signed to when, and the key is the equipment coming in? And what they actually said is that it would be, what, it would be November. So before they would be able to get the equipment. Unfortunately, supply chain across the world and especially with technology is hammered right now. So.
So stealing the stuff from Kent isn't an option is what I'm hearing.
Well, not one that I'm the wrong person to ask for that. That's out of my scope of expertise. No, yeah.
No, okay. I just, I just, I just wanted to make sure I knew we had a timeline and made sure that we are all understanding on that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and the vendor is very aware that we're, yeah, that we want it in as soon as possible. But they, even though they are a direct, you know, representative of the, for a lot of the equipment, you know, they are direct partner. It still is taking them time to get the, get the equipment. So.
Thank you, Mason. Thank you, Joe. Jennifer?
Just a comment, really no questions. I just wanted to add that I'm excited about this. This is increasing access to our community to attend meetings. Having come to meetings or events that maybe aren't necessarily, let's say, kid friendly or whatever, you know, there's so many things that keep people from coming and showing up in person. So allowing us to go back to the dais, but also allowing our community to have the option to either come in person or attend virtually is really a huge step forward. And one of the few COVID linings that there are. So I just wanted to thank you all for the work on this.
Yeah, touching on the, yeah, along with that is that one thing that COVID has done is there's often a bit of pain to adopt technology and do change. And one thing that COVID has done is it's forced organizations to go through a lot, that pain, whether it's for remote meetings or remote work. And so, yeah, it's, since it's, you know, one of the silver lining in a way to a bad situation.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Mason. Anybody else have any questions? I have a couple of questions, Mason. So the equipment that will be up at the dais for council members, is that just going to be a monitor that council will be able to monitor? Like I believe you said, what we're seeing on screen now?
Basically, that is, so the system would be able to, well, it depends on what the computer, the computer that's a part of the system outputs. But the thought would be mostly either it's the, like kind of the computer's second screen that would have any special presentation, which would also be displayed on the screen in the council chambers and through the Zoom meeting. But my, my thought has been that it would mostly be displaying exactly what you're seeing here so that you're seeing all, any of the interaction. And there's consistency between, you know, between what the council sees and what the public sees in the meetings. In terms of, I can't, in terms, so, yeah, the screen would be just a screen. And I've actually, to a degree intentionally, wanted to keep it that it is just a screen if there's a question about being able to pull, you know, having an interact, like a tablet or something there that would also be able to do other things. I think that's best handled as a separate item from this particular project. So.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking is if we continue as a council to be paperless, we would need either a second monitor or a tablet or something to be able to read the packet. And then as mayor, whoever the mayor is, I use two screens. Well, actually, I've got four screens right now, but two would work so that you could, I could see who's raising their hand online on the Zoom, which works this way and then seeing the packet and stuff. But if we're handling a tablet or something separately, then that's fine.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be best to just keep this in a way as simple, you know, simple in that sense, and then handle if we want to have tablets for looking up information and stuff. That's, that's, we just have to do that as a second project, basically. But that should be something that we can definitely do. So.
Okay, and then this setup that we're looking at will work. Okay. And then this setup that we're looking at will work for our commission meetings as well, particularly planning commission?
Yes, we, when we get it implemented, one of the things would be that it may, depending on how complex those meetings were intended to be, it may, it require Keith or myself for now to be present to help run the, run the AV, but we'll cross that bridge. It's possible that other staff could be trained to do more, I want to say, simple meetings, if that makes sense.
Okay. Perfect. Does council have any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mason and Keith for presenting this tonight. This council wished to take. I don't have it on my sheet for a motion. There it is. I'm sorry. It's on the next page. So looking for a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Dimensional Communications Incorporated to install audio and video equipment in council chambers for hybrid public meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Joe and seconded by Beth to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Dimensional Communications Incorporated to install audio and video equipment in council chambers for hybrid public meetings. I'll call for, Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
I'm just looking forward to seeing you all again in person. And I I think this is a good decision on our part because like it's been stated, this will all come back to the city through ARPA funds. Well, that's how we're going to pay for it. So taking a, but we'll take a budget hit for a minute and then get it all replaced. So we won't even miss the money. So I think it's being responsible. We're doing the right thing. And again, looking forward to seeing you all and hopefully it's before Thanksgiving. If not, we write in time for Christmas to see you all again.
Thank you, Joe. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Everybody's already hit the main topics. I just want to reemphasize that how fantastic I think it'll be for accessibility and diversity of people being able to attend in, at whatever way suits them. So it's best for them.
Perfect. Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? I want to say that actually Sean brought this idea up, was it a couple of years ago to do something like this? So and here it it's all about planting those seeds, Sean, and finally seeing it come to fruition.
Thank you.
So with that, I will call for a roll call vote. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Dimensional Communications Incorporated to install audio and video equipment in council chambers for hybrid public meetings. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Dimensional Communications. Thank you all very much, Mason and Keith. Thank you very much for presenting this tonight and bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Next up is new business item number five, 2021 design and construction standards update. And I'll turn it over to Dawn.
Appreciate it. I first pages associated with this. So in fact, I think it caused me problems in connecting tonight as I was struggling getting my computer to be happy with it all. So I do apologize. But what we were bringing this forward to council and really wanting to kind of be open to, to the public and to, to council in regards to the fact that the last time that we had updated our standards was in 2009. Number of items, obviously, that the update over that time, codes have changed, standards have changed, and that's referencing standards and policies that have taken place. And thing was, we felt that that really needed to kind of be rewritten. And I don't mean really written, but really reorganized. That things say for roads would be discussing design of roads in one chapter. And it also talks about it in another chapter. And so that was difficult for some consultants and different ones to find that information. So we were kind of repeatedly pointing that out. So so really, we went through the task of, of kind of reorganizing things and and on the surface, it would look that that we basically rewrote everything and and as the CMC 6010 gives us the ability to make minor changes, we, we still felt that these changes that we did were minor in the intent. It was just holistically, if you just looked at the before and after documents without knowing kind of the structure and where everything went, it would look like it was major changes. So staff felt like just to be sure, though, we wanted to bring that to council and, and let you guys be aware of that. And unless you saw any major concerns in that, that you didn't feel like these things were minor, that we would move forward with publishing these changes. And so as part of the attachment one, I went through systematically through the old and the new and kind of gave a summary of what those were. And, and in general, we just fixed references that were that had changed or from different CMC and other code references. Typos, inconsistencies like that, that was generally taken care of through the document. Probably one of the biggest changes is in chapter one, where it was really, things were reorganized as far as just shifting. And that's where I was kind of trying to show if you were looking at the like, for instance, 1.02 moved to 1.04 and, and so on and so forth. So I tried to give those references and really if you looked at what it said, following through that, it doesn't have like large changes or impacts than what was before, but it was just kind of being consistent, like I said, with, with everything. We also had a, a chapter 10 that was removed and that information was kind of, that information was put into section 1.11, which was seemed to cover kind of, instead of it being kind of the end covering everything, it was better to be in the front end. And again, that was kind of just trying to be better structured and, and hopefully easier, easier to understand. So I'm, I'm happy to go through these changes or whatever that I went through, but I just, I was more so just have this change sheet that I put together and kind of highlighted the sections in, in I think it's attachment number four, which was the highlighted 2021, which would show what was the sections that actually changed referencing this change sheet. But unless there's some specific questions, I would first open it up to that and ask council if they have any questions and I'll happy to answer those.
If council has any questions, if you could raise your hand about any, any of the changes that Dawn is presenting to us? I don't see anybody raising their hand, Dawn. I have a comment. I really appreciate the fact that you did, you know, on attachment one, the changes that you're making and suggesting and then providing that final document. I believe it's like you're right, is attachment number four. Because that makes it a lot easier to follow and that also makes it a lot easier for those that have the agenda and the public wanting to see those changes. So with that is council, have any questions for Dawn on this? All right. Nobody has any questions, Dawn. Beth, sure. Wait till the last minute.
No, no, not a question. No, I swear we'll keep it short. I just wanted to say thank you very much for like I said, the, the little, the cheat sheet, the summary. I know there's a lot going on and, and like to your point, it looks like there's a lot of changes, but I know you all do a very thorough job of, of looking at what's best for, for Covington when it comes to these types of things. And I appreciate that.
So Mayor and Council, if, if you guys don't see anything also as that being major, then we'll just, we'll move forward with adopting these and getting published. Probably get published. Either if not this week, we'll be next weekend. And as with anything, we, we, in our communications with consultants and, you know, we keep dialogue with them, they provide like, hey, you know, we don't understand why this is this or that. So we do keep those things in mind as we do updates and we'll, we'll continue to do that as we go forward. But that would be the plan on this as well. If, if you guys don't see any issues with that, we'll get that.
Okay. It doesn't look like anybody has any questions or anything. So then and it doesn't call for a motion or anything, because like you said, any minor changes can just be done. And I appreciate you bringing that forward to council. So we're aware of what changes you are making. With that, Dawn, thank you very much. Is there anything else you need from us tonight?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Dawn. Appreciate you bringing that forward to us.
Thank you.
And this is just another thing saying it's nice having a virtual or a packet online with 588 pages. I'm glad it didn't get printed out. So thank you.
Yes. My thoughts exactly. Thank you.
With that, we will move to new business item number six to consider authorizing the city manager to execute the Department of Commerce grant contract to develop SoCo Park. Turn that over to Ethan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is for approval of a contract for a grant award to develop SoCo Park. And it's in the amount of $1,274,000 through the Department of Commerce and their 2022 local and community projects program. This grant award was a result of the legislative request that the city made during the last legislative session. So this is a great outcome for the city and community. It's likely that development of the, the park as a whole will be greater than this grant award. So we'll take a phased approach towards developing the park. And this project and these funds will go towards design work, including developing a master plan for the park and then really the first phase of construction. So that will be bidding in construction of the first phase of improvements. So we will see some improvements out of the park, out of this funding and also have a plan in place to develop the whole park in the future. The part, the project will serve the, to benefit the community and aims to be completed by June of 2023, which seems far away, but there's a lot of elements that will go into developing a master plan or there'll be a public engagement process. We'll have to do the design work and there'll be permits that will need to be done and then bidding and construction. So that's a lot to do by June 2023. So the contract actually extends to June 2025, which gives us a nice ample buffer, but that does rely on the state reappropriating those funds that we don't use into that next biennial budget. So we'll aim to try to complete the work by June 2023, but there is a kind of plan B option if we don't get all the work done by that date. So that's the, the grant award that's before you tonight. I also want to just add that this isn't really, it's not part of the motion for approval, but staff would like to request if the motion passes and we enter into this grant contract that we begin immediately to contract with architectural and engineering services so that we can basically not delay the, the project at all and get started on it. This isn't captured in the 2021 budget. So if we did do that, it would need to be reflected in the budget adjustment later this year. It doesn't really change the funding for the project at all because it's all going to be a grant funded project. And happy to take any questions if there are any.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. So Ethan, just then a quick as soon as we if we end up approving this and you all start working on the contract, how long would then, would it take for the money to get reimbursed?
Well, you bring up a good point. It is, it is through reimbursement. So, which is common for these type of grants. And so we do have the task of making sure we have the cash flow of the city to, to pay for it upfront, then we seek for reimbursement. It's typically somewhat up to just when we want to submit a, a, a request for reimbursement. So typically at the very beginning, and we're just doing design work, the costs don't come in too quickly and we might wait for three months to go by and kind of do it on a quarterly basis. And then they turn it around probably in a I don't know, four weeks or so, probably, I would say Department of Commerce is pretty good. But then when we get into construction and maybe the costs are coming in at a higher rate, we might submit them more frequently.
Great. And then just one more question. When you were talking about the, the public involvement piece, will it look similar, do you think, to what was done with Jenkins Creek Park where there were some and workshops and things of that sort? Or what, what do you all have an idea of what that might look like or how much involvement that would be?
I will say it'll, it'll look something like that. Like we do know that there, there needs to be public engagement and we want to learn from that and have that inform what the design is. This is a different size park, right? It's a, it's more of a, what we call a neighborhood park and not a community park. And there's, there's also just different tools and approaches you can take. And I think especially with the last 18 months being what they have been, there's a virtual format which in each format approach has its pros and cons. So I don't want to say that there'll be public meetings and workshops, just like Jenkins Creek Park, but we'll do something so we make sure we get that same type of input and, and kind of engagement from the community that informs the design.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Beth. Anybody else have any questions for Ethan?
All right. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just had one. We did hear tonight, I don't know, Ethan, you were part of it, but the during the interviews, we had someone talk about the SoCo Park. And so I'm glad to see that this is moving forward and that, you know, this is going to come to fruition. I think a couple of people talked about the need for a heart of Covington, and this is part of our vision to do that. So congratulations and, and thanks for moving this forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Anybody else? All right. We have before us a possible motion to authorize the city manager to execute the Department of Commerce grant contract to develop SoCo Park. This council wish to take action tonight.
So moved.
Well, second.
It's been moved by Joe and seconded by Beth to authorize the city manager to execute the Department of Commerce grant contract to develop SoCo Park. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
We are getting $1,274,000 for our, one of our newest parks to develop. That's $1,274,000. We don't need to take aside from the budget and put in there because this is money we have. We just have to make sure we follow the rules. And I know our parks team is very good at following the rules of the grants. So I am more than happy to gladly take this money and make a beautiful park with it.
Thank you, Joe. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Just really excited that this is coming to getting closer to coming to, one step closer to coming to fruition. So next milestone in the project.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wish to speak for against the motion? All right. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the Department of Commerce grant contract to develop SoCo Park. I'll call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye as unanimous to authorize the city manager to execute the Department of Commerce grant contract. Thank you all very much. Next is new business item number seven, consider an ordinance repealing ordinance 07-2021 and adopting replacement interim zoning regulations in response to the newly passed House Bill 100220. And I'll turn this over to Ryan. Welcome, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Covington City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Covington City Council. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of the ordinance before you this evening is to repeal ordinance number. Seven dash twenty twenty-one and replace it with a new interim ordinance that considers the newly adopted form-based code. Which council approved on August tenth of twenty twenty-one. As you remember, ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-one dealt with issues like. Regulations towards permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters. The interim regulations were not included in the form-based code because the scope of the project didn't include the requirement. As outlined in House Bill twelve twenty. The public process also did not consider the amendments and the interim regulations. And the timing of the grant did not allow staff to go back and work with the interim regulations into the amendments. So what you have before you is a new ordinance that will clean up this issue and provide staff with the appropriate time necessary to present recommendations to council. So what you have basically is what you already adopted before with the old code. This is bringing it to the new code that was adopted under the form-based code.
Thank you, Ryan. Does council have any questions for Ryan tonight? Beth?
Sorry, snuck one last in there. At this juncture, do you have any idea how long it will take before you would have a? A more permanent one up for, for us or?
We will have to wait and see the direction of our new director as we move forward. With the amendments with the planning commission. We want to have their recommendations based on that and then have a public hearing and go forward with that. I don't really see too much change into that, but I want to wait until we have more direction.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Yeah, just help me understand. So as I. Read the blue sheet and have read other materials, state law. You know, which supersedes what the, the city and county can do. Basically prohibits the, the barring of these emergency shelters and indoor housing and zones where hotel, hotels are allowed. I think there was one other thing. So just help me understand what these interim regulations do, allow us to do. And then. Two, uh, uh, obviously we're going to move to more permanent regulations. What can we do given the, the. The state law that we have to operate under?
Well, there's, there's a variety of things that this does. What this does, it provides us basically with. A, a time where we have interim regulations on the books so that we can work to develop a permanent set of regulations. That meet the requirements of state law. There are also ways to take a look at it by looking at transit stops within the commercial districts. And looking at different opportunities that way. The areas in residential zones, there's no way to avoid those. Those are required. Those are actually required under separate legislation. This was just continuing of that legislation towards commercial aspects, including commercial zones that include hotels. We took a look at that as part of the study that we've been looking into. And when we put a, a diameter of a mile, which I believe is the requirement, it encompasses most of the city of Covington. So we stuck to the, the zones where we knew that hotels currently exist. And where hotels are going to be planned in the future. And that's why, those are the recommendations you have before you now. We will take a look at this holistically in the future and provide you back with a set of recommendations to move forward.
And just one more question, the interim regs, if I understood it correctly, can be either for six months and then we can. Reauthorize them for another six months. So we have about a, we have it most a year to figure out what we're going to do. Is that correct?
I believe you have six months under these interim org- this interim ordinance. I think you can extend that another six months. I believe Mark is on here to answer any questions that he may have answers to in regards to interim regulations.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to jump in and answer that question. So an initial. Interim zoning ordinance, this is similar to a moratorium in that you can adopt it for an initial six months. And if so long as you hold a public hearing and you can adopt it up to one year if you have another public hearing and you hold and you adopt a work plan. Moving forward, if there are still a need for interim zoning ordinance. If we don't have something ready and we have a reason for needing to continue to have it in place. Counsel can then hold another public hearing and adopt further six-month extensions of the interim zoning ordinance. And that may or may not be necessary because a lot of what we're going to be moved, working with is on the state timeline for when they get us the numbers from commerce. For us to be able to hit our targets. So what will probably, what we may do is be able to adopt some permanent regulations. But it will likely end up being needing to be revisited depending on what commerce does. So. To answer your question, it can be extended for additional periods of time, but we'd want to make sure we had an appropriate reason under state law to do that.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Sean. Does anybody else have any other questions for Ryan on this? Right, seeing nobody raise their hand before us tonight. Is an motion to repeal ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two one. And approve the proposed replacement ordinance adopting interim zoning regulations. Related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters for a period of six months. In response to House Bill one, two, two, zero. This council wish to take action tonight.
So moved.
It was moved by Jennifer and seconded by Christina. To repeal ordinance number zero seven. Dash two zero two one and approve the proposed replacement ordinance. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your motion?
But no, not really. I mean, this is just making more permanent what we've been discussing. So I appreciate staff's work on keeping their eyes on the ball for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure, I'll be really quick. While we don't have all the answers, I think everyone who is on top of this has been moving in the right directions, getting us the answers that we currently can get. And overall, I believe we're moving in the right direction. So thank you for all the hard work. We will see what this comes to as a permanent state. And just thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Christina. Excuse me, is there anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Seeing nobody raise their hand, it's been moved in second to repeal ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two one. And approve the proposed replacement ordinance, adopting interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing. Transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters for a period of six months. In response to House Bill one, two, two, zero. I'll call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Hi.
Sean, how do you vote?
Hi.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
Hi.
Beth, how do you vote?
Hi.
I vote I. It is unanimous. To repeal ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two one and approve the proposed replacement ordinance adopting interim zoning regulations. Thank you all very much. Now we'll move into new business item number eight. Which is from the consent agenda C dash seven. And. Bob's not with us tonight, so. This is for discussion, Don or Regan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here and I can answer questions I have on that if you want me to. The reason we were. Think it would be good to. Reject all the bids and I'm trying to pull this up back to where I was at. I apologize. It's really we. The estimate. We were closer to the twelve to thirteen million dollar range. Lowest bids came in, you know, sixteen million, talking four million. Three to four million dollars short in that regards. So we recommended that, that we reject that. There's no guarantee that if we. Bid it again in early next year, that the bids will be better. However, in the past, it's typically been. When you're bidding during the beginning parts of the year, sometimes you'll get better bids just because contractors haven't. Scheduled out or they're not busy at the time as much. So. You're likely to get maybe more bids also and maybe better bids. Again, no guarantee, but the fact that. It's twenty-five percent above. What the estimate was. We feel that it's worth. Going back out and trying to get. That yes, it delays the project a little bit longer, but. You know, that's a significant gap that we don't have the funds for that, that. Three to four million dollars. And so that was the thought. I mean, looking at a few things in the bids. You know, there's some risk in there that, meaning like de-watering, for instance, with getting across. The creek and, and there's concerns with like groundwater and having to deal with that. That's some of the, the numbers that were kind of high in there, you know, just kind of looking at maybe some items, maybe we can. Reevaluate a few things or change a couple of things to give a little bit more information on it. Maybe that will help with. The bids coming in a little bit better in that regard. So the hope that we would kind of look through a few of those items that. That came in high. I think some of those are reflective of, you know, schedule and stuff too, because some of it was like mobilization that came in really high. That's sometimes an indication of, you know, how busy they are as well. So anyway, that was based on all those factors. That's the reason why we had recommended. Delay and or reject a bid later. Answer any questions that anyone has.
Beth, you asked to have this pulled from consent. What were the questions you had?
Yeah, well, I think. In overall context, I think it was an important conversation to have, simply because it was an item that we were talking about with the public as they're concerned about traffic and. And, you know, we're getting super excited to have this thing start. And so, you know, any, any. Delays, whether, you know, justified or not, I think was worth a discussion. I guess the question that I have, a few additional questions I thought of since talking with Regan is. Is there any opportunity to, to do some of these minor adjustments like what Don was talking about and re. Reposting the request for proposal. Would that change and or is there a process to reconnect with some of the bidders to see if there is a way to. I hate this term sharpen their pencils. Is this the best bid that you can give us? I'm concerned that the prices will go up. I mean, I'm, no one has a crystal ball, but the last year and a half has not been typical for lots of reasons we all know of. So is there a way that we can revisit this, revisit the bids sooner than? January or February or early twenty twenty-two?
That I'm obviously we can't being sealed bids or anything, we can't. Ask the lowest bidder or ask those guys to share numbers or anything like that. Our whole option is to reject them and we bid in that regard. If there's, he's talking about changing numbers since now it's. Bid been open, it is a sealed bid process. So. That would be the only option have with that. As far as can we do it sooner than the first part of the year? Yes, we have to, yeah, a little careful also because we get into the. The holidays, so November and December can be a little bit challenging of getting people interested in bidding if you're hitting in on that time. So we have talked about. On trying to hit that sweet spot, so to speak. And so we're trying to look at that and whether we could do it a little bit earlier. So we're open. I think we can, we're definitely planning on moving as, as quick as we can. And I think more so it's just. Having. So it's not like, okay, you got two weeks to bid on this type thing and get it back to us, but giving them more time. And then also just when that timeline will be. So that's the reason why it's a little bit difficult. If we do it like right now or whatever, we feel like we would still be in the. The realm of still too busy with everyone finishing things up and roll too close to holidays. We have that problem. That's the reason why we were kind of thinking the first part. Of next year. And, and knowing that, yes, it's, I guess, at a few months. I think it is, you know, a good point that you bring up because I, I will tell you, it was disheartening for me. I mean, I've been trying to get this going for a while. So definitely struggled with that thought as well and delaying, but doing that. Guarantee you're right, come in more. I hate to think that that would be the case, but it's definitely possible. If it is, that's probably more of an indication of what the. What the rule amount is. And I think that gives us a better idea for. And.
I think we lost you, Don.
Can you hear?
Yeah, we can hear you kind of. Tinny voice.
I, I think it might help if you keep your camera off, Don. It, it's still not working. May- maybe I can just touch a little bit on what Don was saying, just kind of wrap it up. Postponing or rejecting these bids is basically us hedging against the, the supply and demand, right? The, the hope is, and the typical thing is that in the winter time, there's, there's less projects going on. And so you therefore can get a, a better bid. The fact of the matter is, we just can't. Pay for this project as it was, as the bids came in right now anyway. And so one of the things Beth and I had a conversation about. And I think Don may have just mentioned this as it was scratching out a little bit. Is if we go out again at the beginning of the year and the bids come back similar to this, then we've got a new baseline established. For what we need to start working for to go out and lobby or whatever that method is to bring in another four million dollars for this project.
And we don't think we would be able to use any ARPA funds to help bridge that gap or buy us some time.
I, I don't see a connection to, to it, no. I, I think that would be a real stretch.
I guess I'm thinking like transportation and costs of materials and things that are affected by COVID, but I don't know.
Yeah, that, there might be. There is some infrastructure money that I'll ask Casey to, to mention that we may. ARPA will pay for some infrastructure. Casey, can you touch on that?
The only infrastructure that ARPA will pay for is stormwater.
Right.
So if it does have a stormwater element, that could be a possibility. But I don't think that, Don and I had discussed it earlier, but that won't get us to the four million we're short on.
Well, and the entire amount the city is getting, I think, is five point nine. So we, we don't, but we only get half of that this year. We're not necessarily banking on getting the other half next year. So. ARPA gets us with what we have so far, half, halfway to what we need for this project. If, if we accepted one of these bids.
Great, thank you.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a, a couple of simple questions and I, I think they're. Not out of the realm of possibilities. What's stopping us from seeing these bids now? And going to, you know, making the phone calls to start lobbying for extra money as a precaution?
Nothing, nothing's stopping us, but that lobbying won't start until January anyway. When the news, when the new session begins.
I, I understand, but I mean, nothing says we can't start emailing our representatives right now and saying, hey. Expect this and we just remind them weekly that we do it. Just get, get annoying to the point where they just tell us yes at, on the first day of session.
Right, right. You, you, you're right. My, my point is that, that if we were to receive funds in the next legislative session, we wouldn't be able to probably. Draw on those until July of next year. So we'd have to reject these bids right now anyway.
And then question two is, is what are. We saw a vast jump in prices of just. Regular building materials in the span of June through August. What's to say that these numbers aren't right because the, their, the cost of material. Jumped so much that they're going off of the numbers that are current versus what we were looking at a few months ago with the engineer's bid.
Yeah, supply chains were definitely affected through COVID. The hope is that as things. Open up, the supply chains will reopen. The supply chains will reopen like they did. Again, it's the supply and demand issue. Uh and yeah, w- we don't know. They could be exactly the same. Joe.
And I'm just gonna say that that's my fear is that we reject this. We push off this project another six months. And it comes back and instead of sixteen million dollars being the the lowest, it's. Now we're looking at the twenty million dollars being the lowest one. So. I understand why we're rejecting it or why it suggested that we reject it. It's just on a project like this that we've been trying to get accomplished for ten years.
Yeah.
It's really, it's really hard that we see that line and we turn around.
Yeah, I I think the points everybody's making are exactly correct, right? There's, there's a a gamble in this. The fact still remains, we can't pay for the bids that were submitted. Right? We we a- and so accepting, and maybe Mark can chime in, but I don't know that we can accept a bid that we can't pay for right now. It 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 would have to take some uh, you know, budget adjustments that we make and defund. You know, a a lot of what we're doing in the next year in the city to do that.
We don't have to pay Jared next year, do we? I mean, we can just use that.
I could help, I can help.
I'm happy to speak to that. If we enter into a contract for X number of dollars, then. We are obligated to pay that amount for whatever services that are provided. And as the government, we want to make sure we're entering into contracts. That we can pay for. So it Reagan's absolutely right that it would require a budget adjustment and. Moving money around in order to cover those funds, or it'd be faced with the potentially difficult situation of. Canceling a contract and suffering the financial consequences that would go along with that, which could be significant.
I think we all agree. I I I thank you for that. I think we all agree that we need to be smart and we're trying to be. I I like I was just saying is it's hard to be at the point where we finally saw that finish line and we're ready, we're getting there. We're at that point and now we have to put the brakes on.
Yeah, I mean, we we're just as shocked as you when we got these bids back and they were so far above our engineers estimate usually. That there might be a little discrepancy between those, but th- this was pretty huge.
Thank you, Reagan. Thank you, Mark. Anybody else have any questions or comments? I have one is I'm going to vote to reject all the bids because like Reagan said, we and Don said, we do not have the money. To fund this at this time, and I'm not going to put our city and our budget in jeopardy by accepting. Um any of these bids and then trying to find money to come up with it. I know it's disheartening, but. It's the prudent thing to do for our residents of our city. So with that, we have two motions before us. The first one is to reject all construction contract bids. For the SR five sixteen Jenkins Creek to one eighty-fifth place Southeast project, which is CIP one-one-two-seven. Do we have a motion to approve that motion or that? Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Sean, seconded by Beth to reject all construction contract bids for SR five sixteen Jenkins Creek. One eighty-fifth place Southeast project. Sean would like to speak to your motion.
Uh I'll say this to to echo what you just said, Mr. Mayor, that um I too don't want to put the city in a position where we. We are committed to pay for something that we don't have the funds for. So yeah, it's disappointing. We can't start now, but I'm. I'm of the mindset that I I think um something positive will come out of this and and we'll see bids come closer to what we. We actually expect. Uh and like I said, if they come in again higher, then that's actually probably what the cost is and we'll need some time to. To rethink our budget, excuse me, and work with our lawmakers to find those additional funds. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Beth, would you like to speak to your second?
Um yeah, just to, you know, I can, I can see the the pickle that we're in and and. Not wanting to jeopardize the city's um financial status rating and it's. It is frustrating, but I think it is, it's the right thing to do right now, and I think it will fall on. Council and staff to look at our budget, figuring out what we can or can't do, like making changes and um. But at this point, hopefully, we'll, we'll hope for the best, that things come back better the next next go round.
Thank you, Beth. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? It's been moved and seconded to reject all construction contract bids for the SR five sixteen Jenkins Creek to one eighty-fifth place Southeast project. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote? Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
Sadly, I.
Beth, how do you vote?
Hi.
I also vote I. Um it's been unanimous to reject all construction contract bids. For the SR five sixteen Jenkins Creek, twenty-eighty-fifth place Southeast project. The second. Motion before us is to authorize the city manager to execute local agency agreement supplement number sixteen. With Washington State Department of Transportation and to execute minor changes to the project agreement. That may be necessary to successfully complete the project that do not exceed the spending authority of the city manager. Look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Beth, seconded by Christina to authorize the city manager to execute local agency agreement supplement number sixteen. With Wash Dot. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Oh, I don't, I think it's next wisest step.
Christina, would you like to speak to your second?
Just that it's necessary. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute local agency agreement supplement number sixteen. With Washington State Department of Transportation and to execute minor changes to the project agreement. That may be necessary to successfully complete the project that do not exceed the spending authority of the city manager. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
I.
Sean, how do you vote?
I.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
I.
Beth, how do you vote?
I.
I also vote I is unanimous to authorize the city manager to execute local agency agreement supplement number sixteen with Wash Dot. That concludes all of our new business. Looking at our future agenda items. Does council have anything they'd like to see at a future agenda down the road? Looking at this one, our next council meeting is Tuesday, September twenty-eighth. Um we do not have a study session prior to that unless we do have interviews that pop up at the last minute. Um so we have several public communication items. And we also will have reports of commissions at that time and several business items. And then with that. You know, both of my computers froze. I need the new technology update. So move into council staff comments. Come on. I will call on our new police chief, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything tonight. Uh just happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next is Ethan.
Um yeah, just a quick follow-up on the the grant agreement with the Department of Commerce that was uh. Uh authorized earlier this meeting. Um I had mentioned that um if it was all right with council, we would just move ahead with architectural and engineering. Services this year, not delay the project. And I just wanted to make sure that many head nods are probably fine uh to go ahead and do that. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. That's all. No other comments.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn.
Uh thank you. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to say really quick that our two hundred and fourth project, they um along the corridor, the contractor got the. Pretty much got all of the first lift of asphalt on two hundred and fourth. Um they will uh be in the next two days. Putting the second lift down. Um there will be a third lift, but it will probably occur in the spring. Uh and that's uh partly related to the fact that five sixteen, because Wash Dot will. Only allow us to pave um before October fifteenth. Uh so that section's probably going to be delayed anyway. Uh so after um to in the spring to make that happen. However, the majority of the road um. Will be getting will be in much better shape and operating before that. Uh still, the 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 plan is to have the signal up and running. Um uh before the end of the year is still planned for that. So. So progressing, but I just wanted to uh give council a heads up on the progression of the paving and that's everything.
Thank you, Dawn. Ryan.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. No comments made this evening.
Thank you, Ryan. Casey.
I just wanted to mention that um in the last weekly update, you might have seen Reagan mention that we had asked our human services providers. If they had any additional needs currently with the COVID pandemic that's going on and the possible um use of some ARPA funds. So we received about seven proposals today from the human services uh providers that they did express a need that they had some. Some additional things come up uh due to COVID. And I just wanted to let you guys know that we're going to be bringing you forth um some proposals. On ideas on how to spend that ARPA money coming up on the first meeting in October. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. Thanks.
Thanks, Casey. Reagan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Um mayor, I don't know if you were fine on bringing this up, the um resolution adopted by Enam Claw. Them requesting our support.
No, go right ahead.
Okay, so um as you all are aware, King County is undergoing a redistricting process for the King County Council. And Enam Claw, it it appears that um they're moving part of their city, a majority of it into District Seven from our district, District Nine. And they adopted a resolution yesterday uh asking King County Council to reconsider that and to keep them. In District Nine is a more closely aligned with the cities like Maple Valley and Covington that are in that district. And they've asked for support from our cities by way of just a letter saying we support Enam Claw's request to be in District Nine. And uh it's kind of an urgent matter, so I'm just asking the council if that's something you'd be okay with and we can get a. Letter of support out to them. Okay, I see three, three thumbs up. If I see one more, all right, there's another one.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and do that. Uh and then I also wanted to share with council, as you know, we've been uh in the search process. For a new community development director. So we created two different panels uh this last week. And held interviews. We had an amazing field of candidates. It was quite exceptional. Um the quality of candidates. Uh that we received. And so we ended up interviewing six of them and uh went really well. And the decision was made to hire Selena Lyons, who uh that name may sound familiar to many of you. Uh Selena was with the city for twelve years and then a few years ago. Got a job with Sound Transit and has been doing well. There's their senior strategic business manager. Got some great experience and she is excited to get back to Covington and we're excited to have her. So she'll start on the twenty-ninth of this month.
That's crazy. That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, it's exciting. It's kind of like Ethan, you know, he was here for a while and then left and we got him back. So it's a good thing. So yeah, we're we're excited. Yep, uh that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Reagan. Mark.
There's no executive session tonight and I have no further comments. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mark. Krista.
Thank you to Christina and Beth for attending the annual HOA meeting of the Lake at Winterwood. And I have emailed two other HOAs that I believe will be having annual HOA meetings in November. So stay tuned for more information. And that's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Krista. Uh Jared.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. Um I want to say I appreciate the resolutions that we passed tonight. Um yeah, both the one recognized the ratification of the constitution, but also the mayor's day of concern. I'm looking forward to um getting out there. That's one of my favorite public events is uh going out to Safeway and seeing the public. Support for our um uh for fellow residents in need. So i- it's great. And I'm always uh recharged and my faith in my fellow citizens is is. Refilled when after doing that, so I look forward to it. Uh also, Reagan, I want to thank you for the sending me the. Uh report on, I'd ask Reagan for uh kind of an update on the C Click Fix um website. Uh noticed a number of requests or um reports on par cars parked illegally and Reagan. Reagan provided me a kind of a report on that um and the resolution of those. Uh I guess the, the only thing I would. Um mentioning or suggest if this isn't already part of the system is a uh report that basically talks about. What was the resolution of that? Um especially since you had mentioned to me that a number of them uh these cars that are being reported as parked illegally. Aren't parked illegally. So um I think some education might be in order for some people uh reporting these vehicles, but I do. See, I think a number of people don't feel that they're, they've got a response for their, for their request. So. Uh and then finally, I really appreciated the people that we had that interviewed tonight for our various commissions. Again, always good to see people willing to volunteer. Uh it it struck me tonight, you know, when we ask about the youth council and what's the best way to to connect with kids. Kids, they always say social media. I'd say ninety-nine percent of them. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't give the youth council a goal of. Uh increasing our social media um um what I clicks or or members. On say Instagram or something like that to see if there aren't ways they can generate more um uh followers for our various social media.
So we can become an influencer.
Yeah, so anyway, it's just something maybe concrete to give these groups. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Christina.
Yeah, um thank you for the reminder. That was amazing HOA meeting. We had a really good turnout. Um and just a really good time there with Beth. It gave, it reminded me what it was like to see people face to face. And I really, really like it. I really like it. This, you put this screen in front of me and everything changes. Um and then I, since we haven't had. Um our meeting for so long, I almost forgot. I did have a wonderful time at the Community Resource Fair. That was put on by Real Life and the storehouse, was able to spend a few hours there. Many people came through. It was, it was just a really good time. See the community and be out there with them. Um yeah, boys are doing good. We're back in school. Strong and hard. And I could use an app because of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Jennifer.
Um the the break was nice. We soaked up all the summer. I feel like we did summer so hard this year. We still have one more trip um during the the food drive, so we will get one last trip out of the way. Um before closing up the camper. Uh I wanted to say that the 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 youth athletics is off to a great start. Um our family has missed it dearly. It was so great to stand on the sidelines at CCP this weekend. And I was talking with some of the other parents and I don't think we've had fall soccer. I'm not talking about the drills. Actual games at CCP for two years. Um which is pretty wild. Um especially for families like mine. It's, it's a way of life. It's a lifestyle to have all of these. You know, we're signed up for volleyball. Curtis said basketball's opening this week, so we'll be on it and registering for that. So it's pretty exciting to get back into the groove. And for me, anyway, it's really how I connect with a big chunk of the community. So it was really fun to be out there talking to people and um seeing community members out there loving life. Um also sign up for swim lessons, super exciting. And uh the pool was packed. My kids, because they've gotten used to COVID. And small classes were like, uh what the heck is going on? It was so crowded. So. Um that's going to take some getting used to, but again, it was really great. It's like seeing everything come back to life after, you know. Being in hibernation and you can feel the the buzz and the energy out there in our community to 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 be back out there. Um and um as far as the state Route five sixteen Jenkins Creek. Hundred eighty-fifth, I am more than willing and happy and will make myself available to go to Olympia and beg for money. So you know, any, anytime that's, that's. You know, any, anytime that's, that's needed, put me on the list. Um. I do know our specific state legislators, you know, a couple of them somewhat well. So I'm, you know, more than willing to, to. You know, even text them and. Wrap them whatever, whatever we need for Covington. I'm, I'm here for it. And, um, great news about, um, Selena. We call. We call those people at my work Boomerangs and Boomerangs are the best because, um, they realized how amazing. Um, it was and came back. And so it's, it's really great, um, to hear that. And to have someone that's going to come in and hit the ground running, which is really exciting too. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe.
Uh, thank you. It is nice to see everyone again after that long break. Uh, I managed to get away for a few days. I went to Colorado. And watched, uh, my very first strong man competition. If you think you know what you're doing and lifting weights, go watch somebody lift a thousand pounds and walk forty feet with it. You get sore just sitting there watching it. So. Uh, it's really nice. School's back. It's really weird to have a high schooler and a kindergartner. Um, I get to say that Ryan, for the first time, missed the bus this morning, so I. Got to do what my parents used to do and drive out to Kent Lake. Uh, I will say, I think I beat his bus to Kent Lake and back. Not sure. I might put a tracker on Ryan tomorrow and find out if I can do that. Uh. We. We read a proclamation today, uh, declaring National Constitution Week, um, starting on the seventeenth. Uh, I encourage everybody to go get their small children and read them a cop, or read them the constitution. Um. Super cheap, five to ten bucks. You can get one really easily or read it online. Um. It's. Just, just read it and see where we were in seventeen seventy-six and know what we did to, or seventeen eighty-seven, I should say. And know where we've come. And I think it's, uh, important for us to all remember those words in there. Uh, I want to say that I'm looking forward to seeing everybody again in person in a few months, and I am looking forward to our next meeting in a couple of weeks. Oh, and if anyone has any ideas of using your cell phone as a holder for a seventy-five pound dumbbell. Don't do that. It does break it, especially if you drop it from about five feet in the air. And then you have to go a week without a phone. And you miss a few meetings because your calendar isn't backed up on your Google Drive. And. So I missed pick last week because, uh, it's on my, was on my cell phone calendar. On Apple and not on my Google Drive. So. There we go. Don't drop weights on your cell phone, guys.
Thank you, Joe. Beth.
Yeah, so, um. Mike and I usually take a, a one or two runs each week and. Last week it was nice to be able to run the pipeline trail and head into, um. Gary Patrick, Patrick Shell through Cedar Creek Park. I'm glad that opened up the backside again. That was, it makes it a lot more fun to go for a run when we can hit those trails. And this morning, we, we did our little run up to the water tower and we turned on two oh fourth and. You know, they're starting to dig out the road, but there's a patch of asphalt and it was all new and shiny and. I wasn't sure if we should step on it or not, but Mike's like, well, if it's, if it's not blocked off, we can run on it. And so. Got a chance to start seeing those changes coming through. So I'm excited to see that, that project continue to move forward. Um, so thanks to everybody on the staff for that. But other than that, yeah, the HOA meeting was, was fantastic opportunity to connect with, uh, residents and I'm looking forward to the meetup with the mayor this coming Monday night.
Thank you, Beth. Um, it has been a while since we met. Um, I had, was in the. Communities and Schools Board Retreat today and we elected our new president. Um. I've been president for four years and we elected Jessica Gilmore English. Who is from the Renton. Um. Community College, Technical College, um, as our new president for communities and schools. Um, so it was great to have, uh, new blood on the board. Um, Saturday, I attended the Day of Service Event at Jenkins Creek Park. That Rotary. Um, Jonathan Ingram and the Rotary Club, um, set, organized this with the Boy Scouts. We had thirty-seven youth and twenty-six adults. Show up to do service work at Jenkins Creek Park. They filled a, I believe it was a thirty yard container of brush and there's still more brush sitting there. To fill another container, which is being delivered tomorrow, that George Pearson has volunteered. To come out to, um, fill that container and pull more brush out of the park. So it was great. To see, um, over sixty people show up for that event. I then attended the nine eleven twentieth anniversary memorial dedication out at Pell Ranch. Um, Bob Pell has dedicated a portion of his ranch. To, um, remembrance for nine eleven, but also at the same time. Um, there is a flag for each branch of the military there and a large carving of a bald eagle that oversees it. And that event had, um. Veterans from, there are several from World War Two, Korean War, Vietnam War. Um, several other wars, but then they also had. Displays from. Materials and goods that were used by. Our men and women in the wars from going back to the Revolutionary War. And, um, it was a great event and there had to be quite a few people there. Uh, for that event, and I want to say thanks to our chief, Megan Roberts. And our new, um, sergeant who both showed up and attended that event as well. So it was very much appreciated. Um, that they were there and Bob and Debbie Pell, who owned the ranch, um, were very much appreciative of that. Uh, this Friday is our next SCA lunch with the board. And Mayor Paulie of Issaquah and council member, um. From Sumamish, her name for Christie Melchow, um, will be the guest at that. So you're welcome to attend that as SCA members. We have an SCA board meeting tomorrow, which I'll be attending and as treasurer of the board, I will be giving the update and doing the finance. Meeting next week. Monday, uh, we have mayor's meetup and thank you to Beth and Jared for joining me at that. They've been very. Um. First one was very well attended. The second one was in July, but we still had attendance. So it was nice to be able to offer that. And it was also nice to be able to honor Mark and Stacy Shu tonight as Citizens of the Year. And, um, I'll coordinate, uh, Krista's coordinating with them and she'll coordinate with Jim Zook. Um, so that we can, um. Give them their proclamation and plaque. Um, at their, uh, place of business. Um, to honor them for those events. Uh, with that, I have nothing else. Um, so we will move into public comment. This is our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. And comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. And I see Jeff, you have your hand up. Welcome, Jeff. Congratulations on being elected to or being appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Uh, question. The Jenkins Creek project that you guys decided to vote down the bids. Was that to put the tunnel under Kent Kangley? Or is that a different part of the project?
There was never, that was, um, for a bridge over Jenkins Creek. Um, because we have to, the state requires us to build a bridge and not a culvert.
Okay.
Anything else, sir?
No, that was it.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Is there anybody? Oh, go ahead, Dawn.
I just want to say there was just a pedestrian crossing that was underneath that structure too. Um, as part of that, um. That was the only piece that was associated there. There was a pedestrian, uh, that's still going to be part of the project. Obviously it's just delayed, but that, that was, uh, underneath that bridge.
And that was just to continue Jenkins Creek Trail from Jenkins Creek Park down to SoCo Park.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, because I was wondering if they, if you could just do that part. And work on the other parts when, you know, more funds or. Uh. Become available, I guess.
It's all part of one project through the state that the grant that we receive money from the state to work that full project.
Okay, okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Seeing nobody else raise their hand, I will call, and there is no executive session tonight. This meeting is adjourned at nine o'clock sharp. Thank you all very much and you all have a very wonderful evening. Thank you.